I'll call the meeting to order. Can I have an adoption of the agenda? Counselor Richardson, Counselor Warren, all in favor? And that's passed. Any disclosures of pecuniary interest on anything on this morning's agenda? Seeing none, welcome everyone to the committee of the whole meeting of Tuesday, June 3, 2025. Just a reminder that this is a committee of the whole meeting and no decisions will be made here today. There will only be recommendations, so we'll go to our next regular council meeting on Tuesday, June 24, 2025 for consideration. A couple of reminders for today's meeting. Members of the media may sit in the upper balcony at the reserved media table. All other guests, please take a seat in the first-floor gallery. If that is full, there is overflow seating on the second floor in the Victoria Room, where you will be able to see and hear the meeting. We live-stream the meeting on your, on our YouTube channel, and the recording is available after the meeting. The meeting is also broadcast on Broadcast Live on your TV, Kojiko subscribers, Channel 10, HD Channel 700, and rebroadcasted on Wednesday at 9:00 a.m. and on Saturday at noon. Because meetings are accessible to the public in all these ways, video or audio recording by members of the public is not permitted in council chambers. This is to ensure that all attendees and those who come to make a deputation feel at ease. Thank you for your cooperation. Now, having said that, this morning, we're dealing with a statutory public meeting and an amendment to Bylaw 2024-219 being a bylaw to provide for the administration and enforcement of the Building Code Act 1992 within the city of Coorthill Lakes. As required by the Building Code Act, a public meeting is being held prior to council making a decision on proposed amendments to the City of Coorthill Lakes Building Bylaw 2024-219, a bylaw under the Building Code Act respecting permits and related matters passed under Section 7, Bracket 6 of the Building Code Act. The City of Coorthill Lakes is proposing to adopt amendments to the building bylaw to encourage residents to disconnect storm sewage connections from the municipal sanitary sewer system. The effect will be to waive building permit fees related specifically to the plumbing modifications required to remove stormwater connections from the municipal sanitary sewer system. I'll now turn the meeting over to our chief building official, Ms. Suzanne Murchison, whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Mayor Elmsley, counselor, counsel, sorry, staff and members of the public. The purpose of today's public meeting is to propose an amendment to the building bylaw 2024-219 fee schedule. Counselor Perry brought forward a memo at the April 22, 2025 council meeting regarding an exemption to building bylaw fees for building permits to remove connections relating to stormwater from the municipal sanitary sewage systems. In discussions with the chief building official, they informed the disconnection would result in a scenario where the Building Code Act requires a building permit to be taken to modify the existing plumbing system within a building to enact the disconnection. The counselor indicated he would like to hold a public information session to educate and encourage residents within the Fenland Falls Municipal Sanitary Sewage catchment area to disconnect any storm sewage currently connected to the sanitary system. This information session is scheduled to occur Monday, June 9, at 6:30 p.m. at the locker in Fenland Falls. The intent of the initiative is to encourage property owners who currently have illegal storm connections from sump pumps, roof leaders, and/or downspouts into the sanitary sewer system to disconnect and direct either to a storm sewer system where available or discharge over land. Disconnecting this stormwater flow from the sanitary sewer system will help alleviate extraneous inflow into the sanitary sewer systems during wet weather events and when the groundwater table is high. Excess inflow into the sanitary sewer systems causes both the wastewater connection, sorry, collection and treatment systems to exceed capacity, which can result in bypass or overflow events for the systems. Encouraging property owners to remove the excess inflow into the sanitary sewer system can also help save expensive capital investment for wastewater collection and treatment system expansions that may be required in order to alleviate capacity concerns during extreme weather events. The proposed bylaw amendment to the building bylaw 2024-219 is being forwarded to council to introduce a new fee category, being a waiver of the building permit fees relating specifically to disconnecting storm sewage connections from the city's sanitary sewage systems. The waiver is proposed citywide and not limited to Fenland Falls Municipal Sanitary System. As well, the waiver is not limited to the type of building to encourage both residential and non-residential property owners to disconnect. As of the start of this meeting, the chief building official has not received any comments or questions from any member of the public. I will return it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to receive the chief building official's presentation? Counselor Perry, Counselor Warren, comments or questions? All in favor? And that's passed. Move on to item 4.2 and 4.21 is building bylaw 2024-219, amendment number one. That report, building 2025-001, building bylaw 2024-219, amendment number one be received. And that Table 2, within the Schedule A, to bylaw 2024-219 be amended as outlined in Appendix A to Report BLDG 2025-001, that the necessary amending bylaw be brought forward for adoption and that this recommendation be brought forward to council for consideration at the next regular council meeting. Mover, Counselor Perry. Seconder, Counselor Warren. Comments or questions? Counselor Warren?
Just wondering, by doing this, which is great, will it really, I guess Lindsay is the other area that would be, would benefit from the storm sewer issue? Is that? I guess that's a question for you. Thank you, sorry, I should have asked it earlier.
Through the mayor to the counselor. It'll benefit any system that's taking storm sewage. So, any municipal sanitary sewage system. So, we do have sporadic ones throughout the municipality. I know that a lot of them are potentially lagoon systems, but I think it's still going to be a benefit no matter where the, the system is to take storm sewage out of sanitary.
Counselor McDonough. Deputy Mayor.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question, so we pass this, and is that going to force people to do it? And if we have to force people, and if they don't do it, is there going to be a bylaw or a charge to people who don't do it?
Through the mayor to the counselor. At this time, I'm not aware that Public Works has any initiative going forward to force or to do a mandatory disconnect. This is just a voluntary process at this time, trying to encourage residents to do the, the right thing.
Counselor Perry, do you want to sum up?
Sure. I mean, Ms. Murchison has definitely provided an excellent summary of the causes and the, the benefits of this waiver. And I just want to publicly thank Suzanne and, and your department for all the help that you've provided me in bringing this forward. And I know that's appreciated by residents as well. So, thanks very much, and we'll see you Monday night.
Thank you. Having said that, and seeing no more hands up or questions, all in favor? And that's passed. I would like to point out that no members of the public came forward at this meeting to comment on the changes to the building bylaw. Can I have a motion to adjourn the statutory public meeting? Counselor Richardson, Counselor Yeo, all in favor? And that's passed. We're adjourned until 1:00. There is lunch upstairs. Today is our accessibility awards day, so the folks will be up there.
To the Committee of the Whole Meeting of Tuesday, June 3, 2025. Just a reminder that this is a Committee of the Whole meeting and no decisions will be made here today. There will only be recommendations, so we'll go to our next regular council meeting on Tuesday, June 24, 2025, for consideration. A couple of reminders for today's meeting: Members of the media may sit in the upper balcony at the Reserve Media Table. All other guests, please take a seat in the first-floor gallery. If that is full, there is overflow seating on the second floor in the Victoria Room where you will be able to see and hear the meeting. We livestream the meeting on our YouTube channel and the recording is available after the meeting. This meeting is also broadcast on Broadcast Live on your TV, Kajiko subscribers, Channel 10 HD, Channel 700, and rebroadcasted on Wednesday at 9:00 a.m. and on Saturday at noon. Because meetings are accessible to the public in all these ways, video or audio recording by members of the public is not permitted in council chambers. This is to ensure that all attendees and those who come to make a deputation feel at ease. Thank you for your cooperation. Having said that, because this is an award ceremony, we will allow pictures by family members or friends or others while that ceremony is taking place. So June is a very busy month. We have many things going on and it is a month where a number of things are recognized. And as a result, if we wait for when we generally do announcements, which is at the council meeting, the month is almost over and we don't get to recognize it. So as a result of that, we're adding an agenda item to Committee of the Whole called Mayoral Announcements. So if there are any, if you have anything going on, and this is for council, they can send me a note and we'll announce it at the Committee of the Whole. So today, we are going to do our Land Acknowledgement and Observance of National Indigenous Peoples' Day. The city of Coortha Lakes respectfully acknowledges that we are situated on the Mississauga lands and the traditional territory covered by the Williams Treaty. We are grateful for the opportunity to work here and we thank all the generations of people who have taken care of this land for thousands of years. We recognize and deeply appreciate their historic connection to this place. We also recognize the contributions of Métis and other Indigenous peoples in shaping and strengthening this community. On June 21, we will recognize National Indigenous Peoples' Day. This is a day to celebrate the rich cultures, traditions, and historic contributions of Indigenous people across Canada. Traditionally celebrated during this summer solstice, it is a time to reflect on our relationship with the natural world and acknowledge the deep connections we have to the earth and our environment. We can learn much from the First Nations, Inuit, and Métis communities in their respect and stewardship of our lands and waters. One way for us to honor National Indigenous Peoples' Day is to take the time to learn about how they continue to protect and care for our natural resources and to appreciate their significant contributions to our area locally as well as across Canada. I'll now ask for a moment of silent reflection to celebrate National Indigenous Peoples' Day. Thank you. There are several other events or traditions that are being celebrated in June. It is also Pride Month during the month of June, and we will do a flag raising on Thursday to recognize that day. And there is also a week in July when some pride events will take place. So everyone be cognizant of pride celebrations during the month of June as well. Saturday, June 7, 2025, is National Trails Day event. And in Coortha Lakes, it's being celebrated at the Lindsay Rec Complex at 9:00 a.m. There's a guest speaker, and following that educational portion, there is a challenge to join the folks on the National Trails Day routes and connect through some of our awesome trail networks. And there will be two options for our walkers and two options for the cyclists, which will include separate distances and difficulties. So that's National Trails Day on Saturday, June 7, beginning at 9:00 a.m. We also have, June is Recreation in Parks Month. And Coortha Lakes Parks and Recreation is excited to offer numerous free programs for all ages to keep active and engaged throughout the month of May. Participants can register up to 14 days in advance. You can call the city number, which is 705-324-9112, or email recreation@coorthalakes.ca. We also, as I said, it's a busy month. It's seniors month as well. And a time to recognize the hard work and dedication of our seniors. Not only do they hold a great deal of knowledge that they pass on to the next generation, they also help strengthen our communities in many ways. You will see many as volunteers at our Legions, Lions Club, Rotary Clubs, Kiwanis, Optimists, and a number of the other fantastic organization that keeps our towns and villages connected and supported. They are also leaders in the businesses and reminders to us of the values of hard work, ethic, and dedication. So this month, take some time to thank a senior for their contributions or visit a retirement or long-term care home and spend a few minutes listening to their stories. They still have much to offer. Thank you. As I said, June is a very busy month. We'll now move into our presentations and I will ask Christine Briggs and Elizabeth Peters, the Chair of the City of Coortha Lakes Accessibility Advisory Committee, to proceed with their presentations.
Good afternoon, council, senior leaders, staff, honored guests. Thanks for being here today. My name is Christine Briggs and I am the idea partner for the city of Coortha Lakes. I'm also the staff liaison for the Coortha Lakes Accessibility Advisory Committee, and I'm thrilled to welcome you today to the 17th Annual Accessibility Awareness and Recognition Awards. We try to meet this time each year in honor of Canada's National Accessibility Week. This year, it fell from May the 25th to the 31st. And it's a time where communities across the country come together and celebrate the efforts that have been made to create a more inclusive society. The theme of National Accessibility Week 2025 was Breaking Barriers Together: Paving the Way for a More Inclusive Future. Such a powerful call to action, isn't it? A reminder that when we come together, we can break down barriers. But if you'll indulge me, the part that I'd like to focus on just for a little bit this afternoon is paving the way for an inclusive future. And when we think about a future where accessibility is embedded in our community ethos and in our planning, we first must engage our youth, right? Youth are our future. Young people across the city of Coortha Lakes are already taking action. They're busy in their schools, in their community groups, online. They're showing initiative and empathy and leadership in creating more inclusive environments. While we've proudly recognized a number of incredible champions over the years, we're missing one voice from our accessibility awards, and that's the voice of our youth. So I'm thrilled to announce that we have created a new award, the Youth Accessibility Award, that was approved by council on May 20 of this year. Now, the hope of this award is that we will foster early engagement, amplify youth leadership, and build a culture of inclusion that will serve the city for generations to come. Now, in keeping with the tradition of the Barbara MacArthur Award of Distinction, named in honor of the committee's founder and first chair, we propose that this new award also carry a meaningful name. We can think of no one more fitting than Catherine Peters. Catherine, as many of you know, was a former recipient of the Barbara MacArthur Award and a shining example of what this new youth award represents. Now, I understand that perhaps not all of you had the opportunity to meet Catherine, and so I do just want to spend a quick moment telling you a little bit about her life because it's quite remarkable. Catherine was diagnosed with a brain tumor as a child. She faced a life of legal blindness, a seizure disorder, and a cognitive impairment, but none of that stopped her. At just six years old, she began fundraising for pediatric brain tumor research and went on to speak at conferences and community events for over 25 years. Later in life, Catherine sustained a spinal cord injury that resulted in paraplegia. And rather than allow that to slow her down, she became even more determined to raise awareness and advocate for change. Catherine passed away last year. We believe that naming this award in her honor will ensure that her impact continues to inspire future generations. So the first Catherine Peters Youth Accessibility Award will be granted in 2026. We are going to be updating our nomination forms to reflect this. And just a reminder that nominations are open year-round. Okay. Now, speaking of the awards, which I'm sure you're all very excited to get to, I just wanted to bring your attention to a change that we have this year. And it comes in this form of this little blue rectangle. So as you may be aware, part of the committee's mandate is to bring is to bring public awareness to accessibility. One of the ways that the committee does this is through the Accessibility Awards, but the committee wanted to provide a lasting, visible symbol of recognition. So we have created decals and digital badges. Moving forward, recipients will be provided with a window decal and also a digital badge that they can use in email communications or on their websites, a way to help foster awareness throughout the year and not just during our award ceremony. So without further ado, I will invite the Mayor, our Deputy Mayor in our chair, to join me on the floor where we can start the awards. Okay, so today we will start our awards with the Outstanding Contribution in the Business category. So our first award recipient for today is The Wheat Chief. The Wheat Chief Restaurant is located in downtown Bobcageon and offers a great accessible location. They have an outdoor patio as well as indoor seating. The tables are a comfortable height for patrons in wheelchairs, and staff are willing to rearrange table arrangements if required. The staff are very receptive with helping patrons with card machines if needed due to visual concerns as well. I'm not sure that we have anybody on behalf of The Wheat Chief today, but we will make sure that they get their award and their decal. And next, in our Outstanding Contribution from a Business, we have the Symposium Cafe. The Symposium Cafe offers an accessible dining option in Lindsay. The seating area offers various options, including tables with chairs that can easily be moved, as well as the booths. The washroom facilities are open and easily accessed by mobility device users, and the cafe is also well-lit to support those with visual impairments. So congratulations to the Symposium Cafe. I also don't think we have anyone here. And next up, we have Ken Reid Conservation Area. In order to make the trails and facilities open to more of the city's residents, an accessible washroom facility has been installed at Ken Reid Conservation. This upgrade allows residents of varying abilities to hike the trails and have access to an accessible washroom while there. And accepting the award on behalf of Ken Reid Conservation today, we have Melissa Creasy Alexander. And next, in the Outstanding Contribution from a Business category, we have Trinity United Church in Bobcageon. Trinity United Church is doing its best to make their facilities accessible to all, from automatic door openers, well-maintained sidewalks, linking the parking lot to the sound system, and providing large print bulletins, the church is trying to break down barriers to their facility. In addition to the accommodations made to date, the church is in the process of upgrading their washroom to be fully accessible. And accepting the award on behalf of Trinity United Church today, we have Susan Hachi and Richard Fetty. And next, for the Outstanding Contribution in the Business category, we have Celebrations. This facility is used for a variety of local celebrations. It offers a lift to the main floor, allowing patrons of all abilities to obtain access. The primary gathering room is well-lit, has a great audio system, and is barrier-free. That is, the users do not have to navigate thresholds or risers. The committee feels that the washroom facilities are some of the best accessible facilities in the city as they are spacious, allowing for assistance and aid if required. And Jill Wiltshire will accept the award for Celebrations today. And next, in the Outstanding Contribution from a Business category, we have CMS Web Solutions. Lindsay-based CMS Web Solutions was founded by City of Coortha Lakes residents Richard and Sandy Goddard, and they have been developing accessible websites and providing digital accessibility education for over 15 years. The team at CMS Web Solutions work with several local businesses to ensure that their websites are accessible and barrier-free for individuals with disabilities. They provide guidance to ensure compliance with the Accessibility for Ontarians with Disabilities Act and the Accessible Canada Act. They provide accessibility strategy, development workshops, website reviews and audits, accessibility education, training, and accessible WordPress development. Their work ensures that local businesses are able to provide accessible information and communication to their patrons. Richard and Sandy, congratulations. And our next category is an Outstanding Contribution, recognizing a new build or a significant modification. So this year, we would like to recognize Fieldside Yoga. Athena Brown, along with her husband Justin, took a tractor storage barn and fully renovated it to provide a one-of-a-kind fieldside experience. Fieldside Yoga boasts a barrier-free washroom, designated accessible parking, automated doors, and an easily traversable open concept design. Locally, there are only privately-owned yoga studio in the City of Coortha Lakes that is fully accessible. Fieldside has combined yoga and supportive self-care practices that meet the needs of diverse bodies to provide an inclusive experience for patrons. And receiving the award today is Athena Brown. And next, we would like to recognize an Outstanding Contribution made by a city employee or team. And this year's recipient is Lindsay Schoenmaker. Lindsay Schoenmaker has played a critical role in the creation of the Economic Development Strategy. The almost 50-page document was made fully accessible by an external consultant, but when changes were made to the draft, all accessibility formatting was lost. Lindsay, single-handedly, went through the document and made it accessible once again. This required re-tagging a huge portion of the content, adding accessible tables, alternative text, imposing structural formatting for reading order, lists, nested headings, and links. It was a massive undertaking, and it was only because of Lindsay's hard work that the strategy could be posted on our website. So thank you, Lindsay. And this year, for our Barbara MacArthur Memorial Award of Distinction, we recognize John and Cheryl Hassan. John and Cheryl are both strong advocates for accessibility. Through their work with the Alzheimer's Association, the Brain Injury Association, Community Care, and Ross Memorial Hospital, they have worked diligently to make our community a better place for people with disabilities. Both Cheryl and John live with disabilities themselves and are not afraid to advocate for themselves and others. John and Cheryl oversee a variety of projects, from woodworking classes for individuals with brain injuries to supporting those struggling with language acquisition. Their dedication removes barriers for individuals with disabilities in the Coortha Lakes. Thank you, John and Cheryl. That concludes the awards portion of our presentation. So on behalf of the committee, thank you for all of our award recipients for being here today.
Thank you, everybody, for coming today. And thanks to all the award participants and winners. You know, just an amazing job. Thank you for what you do for our city and for making it inclusive for so many other people. We appreciate your efforts in doing so. So we'll now take about five minutes in case you folks, you're welcome to stick around for the rest of our meeting. However, parts of it might put you to sleep.
I need a motion that the presentation by Christine Briggs, idea partner, and Elizabeth Peters, Chair of the City's Core the Lakes Accessibility Advisory Committee regarding accessibility awareness recognition awards be received and that this recommendation be brought forward to council for consideration at the next regular council meeting. Deputy Mayor McDonald, Counselor Perry, all in favor? And that's passed. We'll now move into deputations. Our first deputation is June Cannet, request for reimbursement of landfill fees. And I believe they're zooming in.
Do this. Yeah, hello?
Hello? We can hear you. There you are. Okay, you have, you have five minutes.
Sorry, I thought I was gonna go first.
You are. You have five minutes.
Okay. Hi, my name is Justin Cannet, Corethallakes taxpayer, retired, and we've been paying taxes, family's been paying taxes up here in Corethallakes since 1969. Now, I'm looking for a request to get my $29.40 back for dump fees that had to do with food during the ice storm. My wife and I happened to be out of the province and did not get back until April 27th. And I had contacted Mike Perry, there's, I think, I do believe you have this information already in front of you, looking, doing my due diligence and trying to figure out what to do and why I would have to possibly pay for dumping stuff that other residents, taxpayers, got for free. So I'm not sure if I should be going through my timeline, but I think I will. April 17th, I contacted Mike through Messenger. He got back to me and told me that contact Miller Waste because he wasn't sure about the dump bins in Bob Cajun and Fennel Falls. So I contacted Miller Waste and talked to Nikki and she said they'd be gone April 21st. Well, I was coming back April 27th. So I called Mike, left a message. My wife and I arrived back home April 27th and I started scrambling around trying to clean up freezer food, 210 kilograms of food that had gone bad. And I decided to take all my branches as well on May 5th to the dump. And I got charged $29.40 for, for my food and the branches were free. So I'm trying to find out, then I contacted the mayor's assistant and I'm not gonna give you the dates on that, you would have them, trying to find out how I can get my money back because I felt that I'm not at equal footing with everybody else that happened to be here. There was nothing I could do about it. So I'm just looking to get my $29.40 back and this is the way the mayor told his assistant to tell me how to do it, to make a deputation. So that is what I've done now and I guess here is my wife to do her deputation as well.
Go ahead, please.
Good afternoon, council members. Good afternoon, council members. My name is June Cannet. I'm a retired secondary school teacher living on North Bayou Road in Corethallakes. I was on holiday at my camp in St. Quentin, New Brunswick, when I received a text message from a friend in Fennel Falls on Saturday, March 29th, 2025, informing me of an ice storm that began the night before, Friday, March 28th. That same day, Saturday, March 29th, my husband, Justin, told me that a neighbor had texted informing him that the North Bayou Road Hickory Beach area did not have power the previous day, Friday, March 28th, as well as that morning, Saturday, March 29th. Trees and wires were also downed. Throughout our time away, we received many phone calls and text messages from various neighbors informing us of the lack of power and downed trees. On April 17th, Justin took three actions concerning a problem of what to do about being out of town. Justin told me he had messaged Mike Perry, Counselor of Ward 3 via Messenger, to inform him that we were away when the ice storm occurred, we would be out of province until April 27th, had lost power to our home for nine days, and would need to dispose of our spoiled food upon our return. Justin asked Mr. Perry where to drop off the food and asked if we'd be exempt from paying dump fees due to our absence. Justin was advised by Mr. Perry to contact Miller Waste as he was unsure for how long the food bins would be made available to the public. Justin then contacted Miller Waste via telephone immediately after receiving this message. There was a brief conversation. The third action Justin took on this day was to contact Mr. Perry again via telephone. He left a message. We returned home on April 27th. On May 5th, Justin went to the Fennel Falls dump and when he returned, called the City of Corethallakes at 2:05 PM approximately about this problem and was told someone would get back to him. Unfortunately, Justin was charged for disposing of our food at the dump. On May 6th, Justin received a call from the mayor's assistant at approximately 3:00 PM to make a deposition to council. The same day, Justin told me he called Mr. Perry again at 3:15 PM. That evening, Justin completed and sent his online deputation. On May 7th, Justin received a call from Constance, City of Corethallakes, at approximately 2:40 PM, informing Justin that a deputation must be completed, which was completed and sent the evening prior. On the morning of May 20th, Justin attempted to follow up on our problem via telephone as there hadn't been any contact in almost two weeks about our problem. At approximately 10:20 AM, Justin received a message from Sarah at City of Corethallakes to follow up. The evidence shows that despite being out of province, my husband at all times was proactive in seeking direction as to what to do about disposing our food since the power was out for nine days. Additionally, my deputation highlights how arduous it has been for Justin to seek the reimbursement, reimbursement that he requests in order to be treated equitably to our neighbors. As stated, I am a retired secondary school teacher. I taught the compulsory grade 10 course civics for 20 years. The course of civics stresses the importance of citizenship and civic responsibility. As a role model, this is what I continue to embody, the importance of citizenship and civic responsibility. My husband and I could have decided to dispose the spoiled food into a wooded area or along the side of the road somewhere, but we did not. As responsible citizens, we packed the food up, drove it to the Fennel Falls dump, hoped at a future date we would be reimbursed for the fee Justin was charged at the dump. In conclusion, I ask you to please encourage good citizenship and civic responsibility by reimbursing Justin the $29.40 it cost him to dispose of our food. Failure to recognize his actions and offer him reimbursement will not recognize the importance of citizenship and civic responsibility. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. If you'd stay there for a minute in case there are any questions for you. Are there any questions for the deputants? Seeing none, can I have a motion to receive the deputation? Counselor Perry, Secondar, Counselor Dobell, all in favor? And that's passed. Thank you for your deputation today.
Thank you. Thanks a lot. Bye-bye.
Bye. Our next deputation is from the Eastern Ontario Regional Network and it's our annual update and we'll welcome Mr. Jason St. Pierre. Jason, if you can do this in five minutes, because I saw it last week, good luck.
All right. You know what? I pared this down knowing. All right. Thank you very much and thank you for the opportunity to come and present to council. We do this every year, so a lot of this information will be familiar and I will be able to move through it relatively quickly. It is 21 pages. I will condense it into five minutes and here we go. Just as a, as a reminder, the Cell Gap, the overall goals and purpose of this project is to cover 99% of Eastern Ontario where people work, live, and travel with voice quality coverage. We have that same footprint where we're looking to introduce standard definition coverage for 95% of those people. And standard definition is for things like email, web browsing, and social media services. And we're looking at covering the same footprint across Eastern Ontario with 85% high-definition coverage. And high definition requires more data-intensive type activities such as Zoom calls like this, more intensive web browsing, video conferencing, movie streaming, et cetera. Based on what we're seeing today and based on our current propagation, we are on track to meet these targets. We will be very close on the voice component, but we will exceed the standard and high-definition proponents. On the financial modeling on this, this is over $300 million of investment which will be made into Eastern Ontario. This is a very large consideration over the five years that we'll be working on this project. Of that, $71 million has been allocated by the Province of Ontario. We have $71 million from the federal government of Canada, just over $10 million from the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus and the Eastern Ontario Mayor's Caucus being contributed, and a minimum investment of $150 million by Rogers Communications. One of the things we do need to highlight on this is that the services that has been provided are through Rogers. They were selected as the proponent of choice through a competitive RFP process and therefore the services we're speaking to will align to their technologies and services. If we skip ahead here to slide, page seven in the deck that would have been provided to focus on what really matters when we come to these meetings, which is on the city of Corethallakes. And if we look at this area in itself, the city of Corethallakes invested $716,000 into this project. And in return for that, through the program project, and this is a very, very basic calculation at this point, we will see about a $20.6 million infrastructure investment being made. So on that quick calculation of that return investment, we're about 29 to 1 on that return. Overall, in the program, we've been making positive progress from our upgrades. We had 14 that were to be completed this year and the upgrades is where we've taken the radios of the existing Rogers Towers and upgraded those to new 5G antennas, which allows for that high definition and more data-intensive applications. That has been 100% completed across Corethallakes. On the colocations, and this is where the structure might be owned by one of the other telcos or a third-party tower hosting company, we had six of those in Corethallakes and those have been completed as well. We have 17 new builds that are being done throughout the city of Corethallakes. To date, three of those have been completed with nine more being completed in 2025 and five additional ones being completed in 2026. We have, we have fallen a little bit behind where we were hoping to be at this point, but we did have a number of challenges, which staff was very helpful in working through with us to get some of these sites secured and finalized with LUAs and lease. Included in the package is just some more detailed information on the construction plan itself, the locations. But if we skip ahead here to page 13, just to show that, you know, over the last year, it's been a very active year, as you as elected officials and staff are aware, between a provincial and a federal election and municipal upgrade dates, working with a number of indigenous communities, our team has been very active in ensuring that we are communicating the benefits and the status of this project as we move through this program. If we move to the next slides, so that's sort of everything in the highlight on the strategic, or sorry, on the Cell Gap project itself. I would like to highlight just quickly for the group here that I believe after we would have come and met with this group, ERN did complete a new five-year strategic plan with the support of our Board of Directors and as well as our staff. We are now into the first year of that plan. But the biggest thing that came out of that is that there's an awareness that at the end of this program, between broadband and cellular, for ERN to be relevant, we needed to expand our opportunities and the items that we might be able to work under to be able to be successful. So it was with that in mind that we actually changed our letters of patent, which isn't something you see very often in a non-for-profit organization, but we expanded those into four key service areas, one being a project managed service, which we are currently working on with a number of counties, infrastructure project services, technology service support, and municipal support. And through that, we are working closely with the OWC, the OMC, and the OLC to ensure that we are finding as many positive, large-scale regional projects as possible that would benefit those throughout Eastern Ontario. I've included a few of the current initiatives that we're working on, including the CERA one, and if I can just briefly touch on this, CERA is actually a platform that monitors broadband performance across Ontario, actually across Canada. ERN is, has joined on as a partnership with CERA to promote this product, to look at the effectiveness of broadband connectivity across Eastern Ontario. And one ask we do have when coming to these meetings, if you can assist with us in promoting this, we are looking to collect as much data as possible locally on where the benefits or concerns might be for broadband coverage so we can work collectively between the provincial and federal governments to try to address some of those gaps. And with that, I think I'm at the question slide. So I don't know if I made it in five minutes, but close.
I think you're a little under. I'm impressed. So let's get a motion, let's get a motion to receive the deputation. Counselor Richardson, Counselor Warren, questions or comments for Monsieur St. Pierre? Counselor Richard?
Thank you, and through you, Mayor. Thanks very much for coming today. Great presentation. Just on page seven of your presentation, I had a quick question when I was reviewing it. Seeing how you're laying out where the potential new towers are gonna be, where the existing ones are, what is the actual formula for creating better, reducing some of those cell gaps? Like, do you have kilometers, like, just how do you position where you're going to put them, just so we understand better when it comes to addressing some of those cell gaps?
And that's a great question and unfortunately, it's not an easy or straightforward answer. When we look at an area, we would take a high-level propagation of what the coverage might look like and then account for the topography of an area. We are focused primarily on roadways in those areas where people are working, living, and traveling, so those were a key consideration. But the towers then are looked at from a topographical perspective on what the coverage might look like. You know, if you were, if it was as simple as drawing a circle around the tower, that would be convenient, but we've looked at it from where we can cover those areas the best, but with also the perspective that backhaul transport is required between these sites. So when they're actually designed and built, it's set up as a, as a network. So we need to ensure that's enough redundancy and backhaul to be able to support that network as well. But if I look at it from a overall propagation, the primary focus is where those people were working, living, and traveling on those major roadways or in the communities.
Counselor Yeo?
Thank you, and through you to the deputy as well as party to staff. So you asked for help in, in, in pinpointing where the gaps and stuff are. So who, who in the city of Corethallakes is that contact person? Because the city where I, as far as I'm concerned, the city of Corethallakes is almost entirely a gap. There's not very many places I can go in the city and not lose service. And, and there's lots of places I can stop and have service, but as far as moving, being mobile and having service, it's, it's really hard to, to, to function in the, in the city. So who is, who is the contact in the city and, or do you need a contact in the city? Because I, I don't wanna get left behind, I guess.
So there's two parts to that. One is the CERA data is broadband connectivity, so that would be about the internet connectivity through mobile or wired line networks. And we have been reaching out to staff to share these, these informations and links. On the mobility piece though, if there is specific areas that you're concerned about, if you can let me know, I can do my best to try to address those. The one thing, and I'm not sure, is your service provider Bell or Rogers at this point?
Right now, it's Bell, yeah.
So for our project to recognize the benefits, it is primarily right now on the Rogers network. That's where we are seeing the growth. Now, we still have 14 towers that we're looking to build, so there is still quite a bit of work to be done. But when it's done, it'll be Rogers network, it'll be noticed the, the quickest. When we build the infrastructure, there is space on those for colocations with other carriers such as Bell if they elect to go on there. So we are hoping by building the infrastructure that will also give them opportunities to expand their footprint and support residents who may have alternate carriers than Rogers.
Right. And I have noticed that Rogers has, in conversation with people, Rogers has really picked it up. So I guess Bell better get off the pot and start reacting or we're gonna have a lot of Rogers customers around here. And I appreciate that and I will fill in some gaps, some of the gaps I know about and I know other counselors who share my frustration and stuff, so we'll, we'll certainly get in contact and, and share our concerns with staff. So thank you.
Thank you.
Q. Counselor Ashmore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Mr. St. Pierre. Just a couple of questions. Going back a few years ago, 2019, our previous council, I was a member of that, and we had a huge announcement in the Little Britain, Little Britain Community Centre, actually it was in, I think it was April of 2019. And that was a huge grant, a multi-million dollar grant for Bell for City Corethallakes. Now, before I get into Rogers, I just wanted to ask about that. What happened to those funds? Like, did they get transferred to another carrier or did Bell complete what they were given as far as funding and support in that project, that, that major announcement that we had back six years ago? I just have another question.
Sure, I can answer that. So the, on the first one, so the 2019 would have been around the original broadband project, which was bringing DSL into communities that had major gaps within broadband coverage. Those funds would have been allocated and spent against those projects. They would have also upgraded at that point a large amount of the transport networks for future expansion and growth into places like Little Britain and other smaller communities that may not have been able to see so otherwise without that funding. But that would have been a separate project from the Cell Gap that was on the original broadband projects under ERN.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, the announcement was in Little Britain, but it was for all of City Corethallakes, like you had just mentioned there. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, the announcement was in Little Britain, but it was for all of City Korthal Lakes, like you had just mentioned there. Second thing is, as cellular and broadband coverage in, in Ontario specifically, it's basically, we have down to three companies, Bell, Rogers and to a certain degree, Telus, but Telus is a sort of a minor player and to some extent, Explore. But with, with Rogers partnering with Blackstone Company in the U.S., they purchased a minority stake and from what I've read, Rogers will be a U.S. owned company in a matter of, if not years, months, because you have a company that's worth a trillion dollars, Blackstone. And they were a spinoff of another company called Blackrock and they're worth 10 trillion dollars. So Blackstone, one trillion. Do you, do you, do you think, do you have any concerns that basically there's one company now that's going to be, have the, have the majority, I guess you could say, power or, or market dominance in, in, in Ontario and in Canada? So it's going to be controlled basically by a U.S. company now. So I mean, we did, the premier did stop Starlink. Not, I don't have Starlink, but I'm just saying that, you know, because it was a U.S. company, but now Rogers is partially owned by a U.S. company and will be a U.S. company pretty soon. How does this work? Because we're getting conflicting signals that we thought that we were going to have Canadian companies. It's just kind of ironic anyways, but I can't, I can't seem to understand. But anyways, it's, it's big money. You're talking big, big money in, in this, in this field of business and it's, obviously we know that it's really essential. Like, we can't live without internet and broadband and we need to get more towers and more coverage. But are you concerned about the, basically the monopoly that's in the business right now?
I wish I had the crystal ball about the future to, to, you know, estimate the, the deal with Blackstone was a $7 billion focus deal on the transport network. So it was very focused on an aspect of it. Could that lead to additional investments and ownership potentially? But I, I don't really want to speculate. At the same time though, the federal government, who does regulate telecommunications across Canada, have been working hard to introduce an MVNO, which is the Mobile Virtual Network Operators Strategy, to try to entice additional entrance into this field. So we are starting to see players like Kojago, who traditionally never really worked in the mobile space, enter into that. Freedom Mobile is looking to expand their network. Of course, Bell Canada, Rogers, the Tellus we see. Explore is now working in some of that space. So I, I can't answer that question comfortably to say yes or no, but I do know there are a number of strategies that are ongoing to try to reduce the amount of investment required in the infrastructure, but at the same time, giving additional choices to Canadians to choose their carriers. In the broadband space, we still do have a number of local carriers that we work with. Nexicom, not exactly in Korthal Lakes, but in Peterborough County and in neighboring communities. Explore does have some challenges, but they do have some very good products as well. And there are a few other smaller companies, wireless providers that are starting to be recognized to be able to meet the provincial objectives of 5010, which is a, is a very difficult thing. When we did the original broadband project, we were looking at 10 megabits download with one megabit up. Now we're looking at a mega, a minimum of 5010 and most of the carriers are doing gigabit type services. So the environment's changed, the expectations from the users, especially in our rural markets, really have evolved and changed. And I do think it's difficult for some, some small providers to stay relevant in that space, but we are seeing some positive outputs from some of those organizations, as well as recognition from the provincial and federal government on the diversification in the broadband and cellular networks. So if the MVNO strategy is successful, I do think we will continue to see growth from, from carriers that traditionally may not have been within our footprint areas. So I'm, I'm optimistic, I guess I would say at this point.
Thank you. And just one more question I have to ask this. We all want cell coverage, like I just said before, and, and with this being a federally regulated industry, people come to council expressing some concerns that they weren't, and I, I read, I'm just reading some of these locations, King's War, Fox's Corner. I didn't know there was tower, didn't know that there were going to be towers going there. They'll be built. Gilmar has been constructed. I think it's activated pretty soon, but well, is there a mechanism? I know we've been working, maybe Director Barry can talk about this later. I don't have to answer it now. But what the people are asking for, they're not in opposition, but they, they have questions when, when these towers are constructed in their neighborhood. And being a federally operated entity that you are, it's, sometimes it's very frustrating for people to get answers and they have to go through so many different channels to get answers and it's frustrating for them. Like, is there any easier way that people can be notified that there's going to be towers built in, in their area? I mean, by and large, 99% people want the towers, if not more than that, but they just would like to be a little better informed if they could.
I guess I can try to answer that from our perspective as EORN. So you are correct. Towers and tower regulations are federally regulated, but there is a municipal component where we go through the land use authority to ensure that we do have approval, we require approval to build those towers. Typically under ISED, which is the governing body of the telecommunications, well, of this portion of the telecommunications market, we are required, or in this case Rogers, to notify landowners three times the tower height, within a footprint, three times the tower height. We've been very cautious to ensure that that's being done, but from a large scale perspective, which I think you may be inquiring about, we do not necessarily have the mechanisms besides these types of meetings to really stitch all that piece together to show, you know, councillors or, or the public that type of, of information. But locally per site, there is a process that we follow, although it is regulated at a federal level, there is still local involvement and we've been working quite a bit with the staff from Korthal Lakes over the last couple of years to try to answer and support them in as many possible ways as, as we can with information that's available. We do have information available on our website that I'd be happy to share with council if there's a wish to do so. And that may close some of those gaps, but I can appreciate and I do understand some of the frustrations that especially as elected and as staff living in these communities, the questions and how difficult they can be to get clear answers on some of these types of, of concerns.
Thank you. Just point out to you that EORN is not part of the government. EORN is an offshoot of the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus and they cooperate and work with us. And one of their, one of the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus's projects was to expand cell coverage in, on, in Eastern Ontario, but it got rolled out to the whole province, so. Ah, sorry. Councillor Joyce.
Yes, I know. I'm in a different chair today. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. And thank you for the presentation. Just a few questions here. Sorry, what is an uplift?
So an uplift would be where there's an existing radio today, but it was on LTE type services and now it's been, been upgraded to 5G. So the radios are changed, the service becomes improved, the throughput on the high density is, is more available, those types of things. So it's an improvement in the services, but there would have already been a Rogers existing service in those areas.
Thank you. And this is primarily Rogers Towers. Two questions here. Are there barriers to colocation and within that, is there an appetite from Bell to co-locate with these towers?
We have seen applications and we've heard more about them, about Bell co-locating on this new structures or Bell, the Rogers infrastructure that's being built. So that is positive. Under the colocation agreements between the major telcos, they do have agreements in place with certain rules and regulations of what they need to adhere to. When these towers or structures were built, it was built with enough capacity to add an additional carrier like a Bell onto these, if they so deem. We have shared some information with Bell on where the tower sites would be, as would Rogers as well. And it'll be up to them if they, you know, find a return investment or business case where they want to make an investment to put their radios on those towers.
Okay, thank you. Last question you probably can't answer. I'm representing Ward Four and just looking at the map on page seven and the list on page nine, I think there's just one, they don't correspond and it doesn't make sense because one tower is so close to another tower. So I'm just, you probably can't answer that question, can you, at this stage?
I probably, if, yeah, if I, I can come back to you with an answer if that would just be a more efficient use of, of time because I can get a proper answer, maybe just better understand the question. But no, and, and the other one we always, you know, when we're going through these presentations is sometimes the naming conventions don't align to what you as local, you know, residents, councillors would consider these sites. So sometimes those don't align either. But I can take that away if there's a particular site you'd like me to look at, just for clarification.
Yes, please clarify. Tower number C8541. It's just not making sense.
Sorry, as in the location of it or?
It's a tower identifier. It's Charlie 8541 is Zion Road and Valencia Road. It's, it's 3.5 kilometers from another new tower being built and it doesn't.
Councillor, if you, if you want to send the question through to the CAO.
Okay, I'll do that.
And.
Perfect.
Yep, thank you.
He'll get in touch with, with Jason and get you an answer. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. Jason, thank you for coming today and, and doing this. Always great to see you and always good information. So thanks very much.
Thank you for the opportunity to meet everybody.
Yeah. We have a motion on the floor to receive the deputation. All in favor? And that's passed. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Moving on in our agenda, we'll now do presentations and up on 12.1 is Lake Management Implementation Action Plan. That's easy for you to say. 2024 accomplishments and presentation. And our friends from the Conservation Authority, Nancy Aspden will do the presentation. So whenever you're ready, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Nancy Aspden, Director of Integrated Watershed Management with Korthal Conservation. Our CAO, Mark Magikowski, asked me to fill in for him today. He sends his regrets and says well wishes to the council. Today, it is with pleasure to introduce Carolyn Snyder, our Community Engagement Technician, who will present to you the City of Korthal Lakes Lake Management Implementation Action Plan and our 2024 successes. Also joining us today from Korthal Conservation is Tanner Lang, who is our Water Quality Specialist. Thanks Nancy. Is there a presentation slide deck? Perfect. Thanks so much for having me. I'm excited to present about the Lake Management Implementation Action Plan and the success that we did see over the course of 2024. Just some brief history, the Implementation Action Plan outlines the multi-year programs that will be delivered to satisfy the priority recommendations that came out of the lake management plans while also supporting the strategic goals of the city of Korthal Lakes. Next slide. So over the last year, the team achieved some remarkable success. This includes 41,860 native trees and shrubs planted, 1,017 feet of shoreline restored, $262,951 in funds leveraged and 4,645 native species planted. Next slide. And so I'm going to jump into our first program, which is the Korthal Water Fund. This program provides private landowners and community groups with financial support through micro grants to implement environmental projects that are going to directly impact the health of our lakes. So through this program, 20 private landowner projects were successfully completed, addressing a range of environmental needs. With a total funding allocation of $50,000, the program leveraged an impressive $203,664 in additional community contributions. In addition to the private landowner projects, six community group initiatives were also successfully completed. The program allocated $20,000 in funding for these projects and leveraged an additional $59,286 in project value. Next slide. So the Partner in Community Engagement Program continues to strengthen collaboration with key partners through presentations, participation at local events and consistent communication via our online newsletter, social media and website. In 2024, we actually launched our digital newsletter. It's, it's featured monthly. It features articles on programs and projects that align with the Implementation Action Plan. We also focused on strengthening partnerships with external agencies, collaborating with Trent University, Ontario Ministry of Agriculture, Food and Agribusiness, Parks Canada, Forest Canada, Environment and Climate Change Canada and many others. To further connect with our community, we did participate in various events, including the East Central Farm Show, Korthal Lakes Country Living Show, Korthal Lakes Stewards Association Spring AGM, Carden Forum, Balsam Lake Association AGM, Zero Net Farms and many others. These events provided us an opportunity to engage with local stakeholders and promote these programs. One of the biggest highlights of the year was our first time participation in the International Plowing Match and Rural Expo. As host Conservation Authority for Conservation Ontario, we partnered with City of Korthal Lakes to welcome visitors to the showcase Korthal Lakes exhibit. We also partnered with Lake Simcoe Conservation Authority, Ganaraska Conservation Authority and Ducks Unlimited to emphasize a collaborative approach to conservation. Next slide. The Sediment and Erosion Control Program continues to develop partnerships with City of Korthal Lakes and industry professionals to pilot innovative monitoring technologies and ensure effective erosion and sediment controlled measures. So last year, the program partnered with Brommont Homes to test new sediment erosion tracking technologies during the construction phase of the Gateway of Lindsay subdivision project. As part of this initiative, a drone program was piloted to assess construction sites, analyze elevations and identify water movement patterns. This technology helps to pinpoint catchment areas where sediment may enter watercourses and it allows developers to implement targeted protection measures. To support developers in navigating our approval process, a draft erosion and sediment control guideline document was created. And alongside this, our fact sheets were distributed during the permitting process for developers. Staff development remained a priority with team members achieving accreditation as certified inspectors of sediment and erosion control. And inspections were conducted across 10 different sites that included construction activities like lot grading, infrastructure projects and agricultural drainage. Next slide. Continuing with the agricultural. The Agricultural Stewardship Program provides technical services and incentives to the farming community to increase the implementation of best management practices or BMPs. Last year, the team actively participated in key agricultural community events, presenting at three agricultural workshops and maintaining a strong presence at events such as the annual agricultural commodity group meetings, City of Korthal Lakes VIP Farm Tour, the East Central Farm Show, Zero Net Farms Event, the International Plowing Match and the Kuchichin Conservancy Carden Forum. Collaboration remained a priority with ongoing participation in the Eastern, East Central Farm Stewardship Collaborative and the Alternative Land Use Services Peterborough Participant Advisory Committee. The Talbot River Healthy Environment Initiative saw continued success with funding from the Ontario Ministry of Agriculture, Food and Agribusiness. Last year, the program secured $43,000 in grant funding to expand water quality monitoring to eight additional properties, bringing the total sites to 11 for this project. The monitoring helps identify areas with poor water quality for future BMP demonstration sites. Next slide. The Forestry and Tree Planting Stewardship Program works with private landowners to increase forest cover across our watershed. This is through various tree planting initiatives, including urban tree planting, large scale block planting and an over the counter seedling sale. Last year, the program received funding from Forest Canada, Trees Canada and Conservation Ontario. Through this funding, we were able to plant a total of eight sites within the city of Korthal Lakes, planting a total of 29,950 trees and restoring 13 hectares of land. Additionally, we have our over the counter seedling sale that facilitated the distribution of 10,850 seedlings across the city of Korthal Lakes. We also collaborated with TD Bank and TD Friends of the Environment. The program hosted a TD Tree Day at Riverview Park in Bobcageon. With the help of 30 volunteers, 210 trees and shrubs were planted to naturalize the park and stabilize the stream bank. Next slide. The Investigative Upstream Monitoring Program focused on monitoring streams to identify nutrient sources entering watercourses and using this data to guide stewardship initiatives. From 2021 to 2024, water quality was assessed at 12 sites across Janetville Creek, Sucker Creek and Stony Creek. This was done in collaboration with Trent University. Water quality monitoring revealed that while all sites met chloride guidelines, Sucker Creek showed unexpectedly high salt levels, possibly due to increased winter road salt usage. Agricultural areas contributed to elevated nitrogen and phosphorus levels with over half of all sites exceeding provincial phosphorus objectives. Sucker Creek stood out for its high nitrate and phosphorus levels, indicating the poorest water quality among the monitored streams. These findings underscore the influence of land use on water quality and reinforce the need for targeted stewardship initiatives. As 2024 did mark the final year for this program, there will be a full report on this study coming soon. Next slide. The Water Friends Stewardship Program promotes naturalized and stabilized stream banks and shorelines through on the ground demonstration sites. technical service for landowners, and a semi-annual native plant sale. Last year, the program initiated preliminary work on the watershed welcome outreach campaign. This is a new postcard campaign that will reintroduce residents to Kortha Conservation and the programs that are available to support responsible shoreline stewardship. So through a collaboration with a local railter, six thousand of these postcards were sent out. The postcards connect landowners to a custom landing page on our website that's an all-in-one catchment page featuring our diverse programs and services. The semi-annual native plant sale continued to be a successful community initiative with kits curated to complement the Garden Guide series that we launched in twenty twenty three. Uh, the spring sale saw over twenty three hundred native plants purchased, while an additional one thousand and seventy three plants were sold during the fall sale. Next slide. The Community Science Monitoring Program engages community volunteers in proactive near-shore water sampling as an early warning system to identify pollution sources entering our local lakes. Uh, last year, the program received nine thousand dollars in additional funding through the Kortha Lakes Stewards Association, as well as the Mississauga of Skougog Island First Nation. From May through September, thirteen citizen scientists conducted monthly monitoring across Balsam, Cameron, Sturgeon, and Pigeon Lake, analyzing key water quality indicators such as nitrogen or nutrients, water clarity, salts, E. coli, and algae. Water quality monitoring of the four lakes revealed generally positive results, with Sturgeon Lake showing slightly higher levels of all key indicators and the highest conductivity, suggesting good but somewhat poorer or lower water quality compared to the other lakes. The program published the Community Science twenty twenty four Nearshore Monitoring Report on our website, offering a detailed analysis of last year's findings. Next slide. The Bobcageon Dam Aquatic Habitat Assessment aims to evaluate the impact of the Bobcageon Dam on the aquatic ecosystem and identify opportunities for improvements. Uh, Kortha Conservation worked closely with Parks Canada, Jamie Schmael's office, and the Save the Walleye Group. Uh, so we partnered with Parks Canada to install seven water level loggers in sensitive wetland areas on Sturgeon Lake and near the Bobcageon Dam. These loggers collect hourly water level data, providing critical insights into wetland and flow dynamics. A significant milestone for the project was the Trent Severn Waterways Agreement to a pilot project. So for the first time in years, water will be allowed to flow over the stop blocks instead of solely through the hydraulic gates. This experiment will help to assess its impact on fish populations, particularly walleye spawning success. Next slide. The Stormwater Monitoring Program assesses urban runoff areas in Lindsay and drainage zones leading into the Skougog River to identify nutrient contaminant sources. This year, or last year, monitoring efforts covered four water level sites, thirteen water quality sites, and thirty-two fish community sites. Uh, this is all across Jennings Creek, Distillery Creek, Sinister Creek, Albert Street Creek, and the Skougog River. Monthly precipitation from April to July was higher than average, remained average in August, and was lower in September and October. Wet weather events played a significant role in contaminant transport as rainfall flushed accumulated pollutants from the landscape, particularly during extended dry seasons. Next slide, please. This is a continuation of the stormwater monitoring. Uh, so while the Skougog River maintained good overall water quality, urban streams exhibited marginal to poor water quality, reflecting the environmental impacts of urbanization. The findings of the nearshore fish community and the aquatic plant community highlight the ongoing influence of urban development on aquatic ecosystems and the importance of targeted conservation efforts. Ongoing monitoring provides valuable insights into how stormwater runoff is going to affect our Skougog River. Next slide. This is our last program. Uh, so the Urban Restoration Program promotes naturalization techniques to improve infiltration and reduce runoff through demonstration low-impact development projects, or L I Ds, collaborations with the building industry, and private land consultations. Last year, forty five thousand dollars in grant funding was secured from R B C Tech for Nature to install a rain garden at Kenraid Conservation Area. The project incorporated multiple sustainable features and will act as a demonstration site for visitors to see proper L I D components for mitigating urban runoff. In addition to this on-the-ground project, the Urban Forest Guide was developed as part of our Healthy Garden Guide series. Designed to meet the specific need of landowners, the guide offers four customizable templates, detailed species lists, and essential maintenance tips to support the creation of thriving urban forests. And that's everything I have. This is all very brief overview of those programs. So if there's more questions, thank you.
Great, thank you. Uh, let's get a motion to uh receive the uh the presentation regarding the Lake Management Implementation Action Plan twenty twenty four accomplishments and that the recommendation be brought forward to council for consideration at the next regular council meeting. Counselor Warren, Counselor Richardson. And questions, Counselor Richardson.
Thank you and through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, great presentation. Obviously, you guys have had a very busy year, but you've had a very impactful year. So congratulations on that. One quick question. You spoke about grants throughout the program, the different projects that you have available. For example, um, what would um the landowners buy in would be through the waterfront project? What would the monetary component be? Just for an example of what are your grants that's available?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so for our water fund program, private landowners for their projects are allowed to receive up to fifty percent of their project cost to a maximum of four thousand dollars. The community side of that is a little bit different, where they have the potential to receive more funding based on what the committee decides.
Well, there you just answered my second question. I was going to say, if there was community projects, what's the the grant money or the funding that's available? No, thank you very much. Like I said, it's my second time seeing this, and I meant to ask that question the last time, but really well done. Thank you.
Counselor Joyce.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you. Uh, thank you for the presentation. The pilot study on sediment control from at home has really interested me there. Can you expand on that? Like, I saw on the map you identified three locations. So there was mitigation strategies, like, did it work and how well did it work uh in that study, if you can answer that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to put it over to Nancy, who's the director of that program.
Thank you. Uh, through you, uh, Mr. Mayor. Um, so last year was a pilot study. So we did the erosion risk assessment on that development property. So basically, it pinpointed the key areas on that development where we could see sediment going into the streams. They have now put um the erosion control measures in place. It's a little bit too early to see if it's working, but we continue to monitor and inspect that.
Hey, thank you. I think it's a great pilot study that we can expand on. Thank you.
Counselor Warren.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, and a great presentation, Carolyn. I just want to say, uh, I'm asking people to go to the Kortha Conservation website because there's a really cool video of walleye at the Bobcageon Dam. We saw that at our meeting. It was quite something. And I'm just so happy about this project. Um, maybe yourself or Nancy. Um, we're going to have the data. When will the decision be made to change the dam flow? I guess you'll have to look at all the data and it'll be a couple of years.
So um, they are currently working towards collecting the data for that. I believe they are looking to test something out in this coming fall with Parks Canada. But obviously, we're collecting data. We will get the recommendations from the data that we're seeing, and then we'll move forward from there.
Thank you. Counselor Ashwin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks very much for the presentation. I just had a couple of things I was going to ask about the Lake Management Plan, specifically with Pigeon Lake. Just sort of going back a bit, um, there was a document that was uh put together in twenty nineteen. It was in May of twenty nineteen. Actually, it was put out in June of twenty nineteen. So um, there were many stakeholders, including the Kortha Conservation, Selwyn Township. These were the signatories of of the of Pigeon Lake, specifically uh water management plan, Selwyn Township, Kortha Conservation, Save Pigeon Lake, Fleming College, Bobcageon Truth and Reconciliation, and Ontario Waterways, Parks Canada. So they were all signatories. They signed on to this. So what they, what the group, I was I was a participant. I was an attendee. Um, some of the observers were the legal representatives for the Williams Treaties First Nations, the Curved Lake First Nation, Williams Treaties First Nations, Aboriginal Law Center, Department of Justice, and Parks Canada Legal Council, Department of Justice. So they, we got together at the Peterborough Library in May of twenty nineteen. Um, we said, what are the positive things about specifically Pigeon Lake? If we get some sort of a plan together, you've got ecological health of the lake, aesthetic character of the lake, and associated water quality, healthy fish habitat, protection against invasive species, achievement of food security for economic opportunities for the First Nations, and recognition and respect of indigenous cultural practices and traditional knowledge. And then if we didn't do anything, what would what would be the ramifications? And and these were the points, and they're really interesting. First of all, the deteriorating relationships among the people, navigation and safety of the lake, waterfront access for property owners, lakefront property values, reduced opportunities for angling and fishing activities, likely increase in invasive species, uh, removed and ongoing restraint restraint of indigenous traditions and cultural practices. So that was brought out in twenty nineteen. In the course of early twenty twenty, uh, pandemic started, and then basically, we're starting all over again. Two years later, a year and a half, myself and Counselor Richardson, we 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 put a memo, joint memo together on March ninth, twenty twenty one, just basically asking if the council support, and we got unanimous council support for multilateral agreement between all parties to find a solution. So anyways, it looks like you're finding out, you're working with a lot of people, but do you, do you um, there's a lot of people here that were on this 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 particular study. It was a it was a report. In fact, I think it's the only one in Canada that any federally regulated waterways, I think there's three federally regulated waterways, and Pigeon Lake is one, of course, is the Trent Severn Waterway, one of the lakes, um, in Canada to be completed. And it was quite a it was quite a milestone report that we had completed. So um, just warning if you're aware of that, and if and 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 that some of these uh, some of these signatories on this, including Conservation, Kortha Conservation, they were they were part of it, and Mark, C A L Mark Matreski was there, and and it was a very well organized committee. So we had a lot of success there. And just warning if if you're continuing to work with like Fleming College and um all these groups that I've mentioned here, I'm sure you are, but it's a it's a huge undertaking, but it's something that you sort of have to keep working on because, you know, things change. So but anyways, thanks for your work, and I'm glad that it's taking a priority.
Did you wish to comment?
I'll just say that we work, um, we have a number of partnerships, and we do work really closely with academia and Parks Canada and all of those organizations, and we continue to as we move through this.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. Uh, all in favor? And that's passed. Thank you for coming today, and thank you for your presentation. Always a pleasure to hear from the Conservation Authority, and you always have great presentations, so we appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to consent matters, uh, a motion that all of the proposed recommendations shown in section thirteen point one of the agenda be approved by the Committee of the Whole in the order that they appear on the agenda sequentially numbered and forwarded to council for consideration at the next regular council meeting. I have a mover. Counselor Dobell, Counselor E O, all in favor? And that's passed. Moving on, we have no items extracted from consent. We have no newer other business. Uh, there than fourteen point one is a memorandum regarding concerns with elements of Bill Five being Protect Ontario by Unleashing Our Economy Act twenty twenty five. It's a memo from Counselor Dobell and Counselor Warren. Uh, do you wish to speak to it?
Um, yes, Mr. Mayor. Um, we are concerned that the potential use of special economic zones as outlined in Bill Five to override environmental protections, indigenous rights, health and safety protocols, collective agreements, local zoning restrictions is potentially reckless, unconstitutional, and frankly unnecessary. Worker rights, health and safety legislation, and zoning bylaws have been created, negotiated, and implemented for good reasons, the goal of which is to make our communities healthy and safe, as well as to ensure that all of our citizens are treated with fairness and respect. I would note as well that Bill Five would also greenlight a proposed expansion of a waste disposal facility at the edge of town of the town of Dresden in southwestern Ontario without an environmental assessment. The landfill plan is facing widespread local opposition, including from one of Premier Ford's own M P Ps, Conservative M P P Steve Pinsono. In the writing of Lampton Kent Middlesex posted a statement saying that he is angry and frustrated about the project and does not support the government's legislation pushing it through. And as Darren Caniff, the mayor of Chatham, Kent, has stated, if a massive landfill can be forced on our town without a full environmental review, whose town is next? Mr. Mayor, I believe that all municipalities across Ontario should be concerned about this legislation, the implications, and the potential impacts. I would note that A M O have publicly raised concerns, and we are in receipt of resolutions from the town of Orangeville and the town of Shelburne. Accordingly, I believe it is only appropriate that the City of Kortha Lakes publicly raise our concerns in opposition to Bill Five.
Thank you. Counselor Warren, do you wish to speak to it?
Certainly do. Through you, Mr. Mayor, and I'm glad to be sharing this memo with Counselor Dobell. This bill, Bill Five, would enable to designate any location in Ontario as a special economic zone, including provincial parks, or even conservation authorities in Kortha Lakes, or wherever, and then to exempt any company or project in the zone from having to comply with whichever provincial laws, labor laws, provincial regulations, or municipal bylaws the government chooses. These moves could put workers at risk, as it opens the door to cabinet to declare that such things as Ontario's environmental regulations, its tax laws, or a city noise restriction don't apply in a designated zone. No other Canadian province has anything like this. Essentially, the cabinet could give corporations a free pass to circumvent all sorts of important protections. Bill Five represents a sweeping and unprecedented gutting of the Endangered Species Act by eliminating the act and substituting toothless regulation that regulations that relies on voluntary acts and accelerate the extirpation and extinction of key species at risk. Bill Five, the Protect Ontario by Unleashing Our Economy Act, would give Premier Ford and his cabinet unprecedented power over our communities, including powers to dictate who is exempt from the law and who is not. If passed, Bill Five would be a direct attack on healthy communities, good planning, clean water and air, species at risk, and the rights of indigenous people, all to benefit a handful of government friends. Schedule nine in Bill Five would allow the premier and cabinet to take full control over decisions that are usually made by the legislature. Sound familiar? This means they could decide which provincial and municipal laws would apply to so-called special economic zones, provisions and enable the premier and cabinet to hand out exemptions. The premier's trusted businesses and developers could have the authority to undertake projects without regard to provincial laws and bylaws. This could lead to a developer building large subdivisions within a provincial park in Kortha Lakes, since not even provincial parks will be immune from this bill. Or consider that a developer wanted to build a massive subdivision far from an urban area in one of the conservation areas located in Kortha Lakes. Under Bill Five, any provincial or municipal law or statute could be suspended. Think about the ramifications of that. Doug Ford and his cabinet need to wait to see how the discussions with the Prime Minister and premiers evolve. This is a non-democratic move when we are fighting for our democracy. This is Trumpish than Canadian. This bill will not bring forward affordable housing, which the Prime Minister is planning to build. Please stop Bill Five. Elbows up. Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else? Counselor Richardson.
Thank you, and to you, Mr. Mayor. I am in the same mindset as the councillors presenting the memo today. I did read through it extensively, being on the Heritage Committee, planning, of course, a couple of conservations, and there's definitely flags of awareness that we need to say to the province, you need to slow down and strike a balance, because they are really compromising the integrity, environmental integrity, and putting housing first. Well, there's a lot of parameters that we have to look at. I mean, through the heritage lens, you have the ability for the province now to exempt sites from archaeological assessments. I mean, there's a lot of language in this bill that I think is going to have a huge impact if we don't say, province, you need to slow down and rethink what you're doing. So I'm supporting my councillors on this memo.
Q. Counselor Perry.
Thanks very much, and I want to, Mayor, and I want to thank my fellow councillors, Dobel and also Warren, for bringing this to our consideration. Bill Five is currently under consideration at the provincial legislature, and I just want to echo the concerns expressed by all three now of my council colleagues. Very, very strong concerns about Bill Five's potential to erode environmental protections, including replacing the Endangered Species Act. As environmental defense has said, this is a rollback of a hard-fought protection for nature and biodiversity. Something I find also alarming has been the repeated statement that there has been a lack of indigenous consultation, that Bill Five is proceeding and was developed without meaningful consultation with indigenous peoples, which violates the treaty obligations, including the terms and spirit of the United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous People. This is a direct attack on our treaties, our lands, and our future generations, and that's a quotation from Grand Chief Alvin Fidler. The Canadian Environmental Law Association has warned that this sets a dangerous precedent, Bill Five does, creating zones of legal exceptions to a fast-tracked industry. As Counselor Warren alluded, I can't help but think of MZOs, but on a far larger and more implicating scale for the people both of our municipality and the province of Ontario. As Counselor Richardson just alluded to, there's also an expansion of ministerial authority, reducing the roles of municipalities, of conservation authorities, of independent science bodies that really take away, or can take away if passed, the checks and balances in the power of elected officials versus the power of cabinet ministers. And last but not least, I just noticed that the government is invoking closure on this bill, therefore limiting debate. It was moved through already quickly through the legislative process with limited public engagement, and that can erode trust and participation, obviously, in our major decisions. So, you know, given all of those factors, concerns, there, I know indigenous people are protesting outside of Queen's Park for their voices to be heard, and our as indigenous peoples' treaty rights to be honored and respected. And so for all those reasons, I oppose Bill Five and encourage my fellow councillors to express concerns through this motion. Thank you.
Counselor Joyce.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, I'll keep it short. I just look at, I'm in agreement, I look at Bill Five. Democracy is a clunky, not easy process, but it's essential, and this, Bill Five is a slide backwards in the wrong direction, is very undemocratic, in my opinion. Thank you.
Counselor Ashmore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question through you to Director Barry, perhaps, or the movers. As far as like other programs that have been brought in, like the Green Belt, and they protected certain areas for agriculture from non-development, you have exceptions, and the word is exception, that Counselor Perry had mentioned about exceptions. Who governs those? Like, I mean, you have so many of these exceptions all over the province, like, and they're even in the Green Belt, where you have exceptions, whether it's beside a town or a hamlet. It's just, is it the landowners that apply for these exceptions? Or how do they get their exceptions in the Green Belt? And I'm not arguing about the Green Belt, but I'm just using that as an example. So we have Bill Five here, but we also have the Green Belt, which was supposedly designed to protect farmland, but then again, you've got the mention of housing here. So advanced housing and infrastructure growth, how does it work hand-in-hand? Like, I know it's kind of messy, but I don't know. How does that? We're not on the Green Belt here, per se, like Kortha Lakes, but not very far from here is the Green Belt. So just wondering how that's related to this bill, if there is any relation.
Director, do you have a response, or you'd like to get back to the councillor later time, or it's not in your wheelhouse?
I could say all of the above, but at a high level, and thank you for the question through you, Mr. Mayor, to the councillor, the exceptions are typically through regulation, and that's through the province, not the landowner directly, and not through a request to the municipality. So exceptions, again, typically through an Ontario regulation, and that is governed by the minister. There can be a series of requests that are made by individual landowners for the province's consideration, but those would be my comments to that question. Thank you.
Q. You're good? Okay. Counselor Dobel. Counselor Warren.
I was just going to say that it's like an MZO to the councillor, so you know what happened there, so.
Counselor Dobel, the motion is as in the memo. Was there anything more? Did you want to sum up on it, or you're good with the way it is?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am good with the way it is. I really like the questions and the observations of my fellow councillors on this. This is, again, the comparison to MZOs is, I think, very appropriate. The problem I see here is when things go sideways, and something will go sideways, and it won't be a small thing, the unintended consequences, the fallout, who will be left holding the bag? And it will be the municipalities and the people that are still there after the fact. And so I'm grateful for the support of my colleagues for this. I really do feel that we need to, we need to speak out against it.
Q. So the motion is the memorandum as written, all in favor. You can't have recorded votes in Committee of the Hall. You can wait and do it at council if you want. You can extract it and do it there if you want. All in favor. Yeah, I don't think you're going to have a problem anyway. Moving on to 14-2, it's a memorandum from Counselor Perry regarding speed limit posting on Daytona Beach Road, Pleasure Street, and Admiral Drive. Did you want to speak to it?
Just very briefly, Mayor, this one's quite straightforward. There's a resident living on Daytona Beach Road. It was recently resurfaced last year. The resident had been expecting speed light limit signs to be posted following the reconstruction. They weren't. When we dug a little deeper, it turns out that there isn't a bylaw, as I note in my memo, prescribing the speed or requiring signs to be posted. That is a strip where there is traffic and dust, and as a well-traveled street in the municipality, we're bringing this memo to be able to assign the standard forty kilometers and post signs accordingly.
So you're moving it as printed. Is there a secondary? Counselor Ashmore. Okay. Anybody else wants to speak to it? Counselor Joyce.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. To Counselor Perry, I'm sure your intentions are very good here. I'm just trying to understand process is, has our traffic division agreed to this? I mean, like, they're all on board?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, okay. What I was just afraid of is us councillors just saying, I want a stop sign, I want this arbitrarily, so that's not happening? I'm good with that. Back to democracy again.
I tend to try and avoid arbitrariness where possible, Mayor. Yes, and I want to also thank the traffic division, the engineering department, for their help on this procedurally and in drafting the memo.
Q. So we have the memo, it's moved by Counselor Perry, seconded by Counselor Ashmore, all in favor. And that's passed. And we're at the end of our rope here. Motion to adjourn. Counselor Yo and Counselor Perry, all in favor? Thank you very much.